Good evening, welcome. Thank you for joining us. This is the Marion City Council meeting for Thursday, December 22nd. Those who are joining us remotely, welcome. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper.
Here.
Mr. Jensen.
Here.
Ms. Atkins. Mayor Abu Osalee.
Here.
Mr. Brandt.
Here.
Ms. Mensah.
Here.
Mr. Sterned.
Here.
Thank you. It's time we have a moment of silence. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a public forum, which is a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any item that is on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Any comments on an item that is associated with a public hearing, there'll be time to speak at the time of the public hearing. This is the opportunity for people who are here to address the council on any item which is on the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If there's anyone here to address council, please come forward. Good evening. Please state your name and address and proceed. Thank you very much.
Sure. My name is Adam Strat. I'm at 1045 Kettering Road in Marion, Iowa. I guess I will be coming the owner slash developer slash builder for Yorkshire Court, which is coming up as a request to take over the basin and the street later today. I just want to do a couple of bullet points, just so everybody understands my intentions and make sure everything's kind of clear there with it. I'm not expecting to just hand this over. There are issues obviously with development in the last 15 years in regards to the basin, even though the basin is up to code and whatnot, it is difficult to maintain currently. So my intention is to remove all of the decorative rock that is on the lower portion of it to make it very easy to mow and maintain going into the future with it. So that's the how we can fix the basin on my portion. There is also a decorative pond to the north of the basin that is going to be completely removed and become a distant memory because nobody wants or wants to pay for it in that particular development. That should take care of everything with the basin. In regards to the cul-de-sac slash street, there's been some concerns about moving snow. Obviously, the street was never inspected when this development was built. That's been a concern brought up. And then also, you know, there's there's curbs in the center of the cul-de-sac and it's just difficult to get trucks and things around in there as it said. So we are missing water service on what's going to be lot five. So we're going to be digging up the center of the cul-de-sac in order to get to the water main to bore over and add water service. When we do that, it'll give us a really good opportunity to inspect the street, look at thickness, compactions, kind of see what's going on to look at from that standpoint. We're also then going to remove all of the curbs. There's a manhole there that is high. Reduce that down and then repave everything flat so that we remove all the parking in the center of it, make it very easy to get around and take care of those issues. There is a couple panels also on the street that are cracked currently. I don't have an issue with removing those panels and re-poring them. I guess my intention is wanting to do a good job and you know, put a good foot forward before we actually turn this over from what it currently sits. And then the last thing with it is I guess with the housing, we're missing seven houses and then we're going to build seven houses obviously in there, but we're going to change it up. So we've removed the outlaw that the outlot that goes around all of these lots. The current owners are going to be taking ownership of the portions in front of them. We're adding the ground to the seven lots that currently aren't built on. It's going to basically going to be moved into more of a single family situation. With that, we're going to be building smaller homes 31 by 69. That'll get us back to where we can do our minimum seven foot setbacks on both sides of the house. Or you know, instead of doing all these two and a half and five foot like was originally planned, there's going to be no more shared driveways except for one that's already built. And then that'll allow a lot more space for snow and whatnot during these fun events like tonight with it. So that's those are my bullet points on it. I don't know if somebody's got a question I need to answer. I can quick. Otherwise, I'm good.
Yep, we can. We can take questions. Anyone have questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, could you comment on the modifications that you're going to make to the cul-de-sac? I'm just, or the bulb, I guess you might say.
Sure.
I'm not sure I caught everything that you were intending to do with that.
Yeah. So in the center of the cul-de-sac, since originally obviously this was was meant to be private, they set up, there's basically two sections that are all curbs that allow for parking in the center of this cul-de-sac currently. Those are then filled with river rock and then there is a manhole for that's in the center that's raised. It's kind of fortunate for me since we're missing water service that broke on one of the lots. We're just going to basically dig down on that center, get to the main, that'll that'll get us really good access to the street and all those areas. And then we're just going to cut all the curbs out, shrink the manhole and basically repave everything. So it's going to be a nice, a nice flat cul-de-sack like it should be.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And you are aware that the staff recommended to not approve it?
Correct, I am aware. Yep.
And so what's, there are lots of privately owned streets in the city. What's your reason for wanting the city to own this street? And then also, our current policy is that we don't own wet basins. So I mean, what would be the reason for us to go against that policy?
Well, this isn't a wet basin. It is a dry.
I understood that it is.
It's a dry basin.
Okay.
It's not a wet basin.
Okay.
I think that confusion is there is a very decorative pond on the north side of the basin. That's not a basin. That was originally part of the design of the whole development was to do all these fancy ponds. Nobody in the world that lives there wants to maintain it and has any desire to keep it. So part of my agreement with the neighbors is I'm going to just completely remove it with it. But that's the only part that's actually wet. The basin itself is not wet, but it is full of larger decorative rock in the bottom. So it basically makes it extremely difficult to, you know, mow or do anything in it right now with having that that decorative rock down there.
Well, I mean, I like what you're saying tonight. So I command you on the effort that you're putting in to this development, trying to get it completed in the manner that it probably should have been done a number of years ago. So the basin area sounds like you're going to have that resolved. That probably just comes back to the aspect of the street construction.
Yep.
So that if the street, if the city took it over, you know, obviously there'd be a concern that we're just going to have to replace it in another five to eight years, for example. I don't know how long it could last, but if it's not properly constructed, obviously it's not going to last as long. So that'd be the biggest concern I have. And it sounds like maybe we we don't all know completely how it was built. And if you're talking about some opportunity in the spring, take a better look at that. Maybe it's some different analysis can be done at that time. But I mean, based upon all of the lack of specifications to what the city does desire, I think that those number of problems are still going to hurt it tonight. But I think you're moving it in the right direction. Maybe something in the future might be available.
Yeah, we know obviously the street is to the right size and those kinds of things, but we, obviously nobody looked at it when it was poured. We don't know what the compaction looks like. We don't really know what the thickness looks like. It's not a heavily traveled cul-de-sac, which is nice.
Certainly not.
And it's small, but yeah, I mean, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that I just wasn't expecting just to go, here you go type of thing. I think there's some things that I needed to first clean some things up to to make it a good situation going forward for everybody.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up. So you've outlined several remediations that you want to undertake in order to address some of the concerns and as well as satisfy yourself as to the condition of of this development. From your vantage point, why is it necessary for us to entertain this this motion right now versus six months from now after you've done done some of this work or whatever the case?
Sure. Valid question. I guess I just kind of want to see what the what the feelings are, intentions are with the city in regards to it. It's it's the desire of what the means I've had with the neighbors. I think you guys have a couple letters from from neighbors that came in. I don't know if those have been given to you or not. But that's, this is basically the direction they would like to see it go. So I'm just basically trying to be supportive of that and trying to find the solutions that are the best for everybody in the scenario. I guess obviously if it came down to it, let's say the basin is great and the street is is not, as an example. Maybe it's situation then where we are able to allocate the basin, but maybe the street needs to stay private. In that situation, then I would say from the neighbor standpoint, like I've already talked to him about it, we're going to have to go to like a road maintenance agreement or something. Because there's no desire whatsoever out there for any HOA, which is the main reason why we're replanning to get rid of the outlaw A that goes around everything and splits all that stuff up.
There's no HOA at this time?
No. No, there's been three HOAs put in place. They're the first one they sued, got out of it, the second one they never enforced, and the third one they never renewed. It's not pointing fingers, but it's a combination of development errors and previous builder errors. And you know, the neighbors have been there 15 years now and they just want, they think everything should just be done for them. It's a, that's part of the mess that's with the with the current situation out there. And so, and of course, nobody wants to pay 15 years of back dues. You know, in order to get it started like like the original intention for the development was back when it started. I mean, I actually remember this. I bitted on it before they even started on it back in 15. It was a great idea, just a poor execution.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was going to ask that question on the HOA. So at this point, just for clarity, and it's not the city's position to get into the HOAs, but just from my understanding, I do understand the the state law and the minimum requirements to to get to that level of an HOA. But who's, how are the, the, how is the grass being mowed and the snow being removed? Where are those expenses going?
It's not. So the grass removal is not happening, from my understanding. The developer, Gielan, I mean, at some point you guys call him and he sends somebody there maybe once a year or whatever to mow some of the outlots. Sometimes a neighbor might mow a little bit on the front of where they're at, but it doesn't happen. The snow removal is there's no agreement in place. There's one gentleman that they they try and get in, they all kick in 20 bucks. You know, I I have not driven by it today to see if they've had somebody run through there with a plow truck, but that is one of the from my vantage point, one of the biggest issues I see with the development is just the lack of of any stability.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's that's what I was just looking for. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone online who has asked to address the council?
Yes. First, we did receive one comment in advance of the meeting from Marcia Swatzky in support of accepting Yorkshire Court in the detention basin. And then we do have Jason Santee with Hall and Hall Engineers via Zoom.
On this topic?
For the public forum, for this public forum.
Okay.
Good evening. Just confirming you can hear me okay.
Hi, Jason.
I'm sorry.
Said hello, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jason Santee with Hall and Hall Engineers and I'm here tonight as a representative for Burger King for item F2 under Community Development for the approving the central corridor review for the property located at 2449 7th Avenue Marion. And I just wanted to let you know I'm here for questions as needed.
Okay, thank you. Any any questions on item F2 for Mr. Santee?
I bet, I believe it's item F4.
Oh, sorry.
I apologize.
Yep, you're right, F4. Any questions?
No.
We have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who's asked to address council?
I'm not showing anyone else.
Okay, we'll proceed if there's someone else that happens to be there, we can always accommodate that. Considering the situation. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda at this time.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. Items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31050 through 31072.
Second ticket.
The move by Councilmember Harper, seconded by Councilmember Jensen to approve the consent agenda as presented, including items A1 through F2, Resolutions 31050 through 31072. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved. The next section, I'll turn over the meeting to Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve items, I move to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osalee's abstention. And this will include items A1 through E2 and resolution numbers 31073 through 31075.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda with Mayor Abu Osalee's abstention as follows. Items A1 through E2, Resolutions 31073 through 31075. Any discussion? You know, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. I move the meeting back to the mayor. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 31076, approving the City of Marion Employee Handbook.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 31076, approving the City of Marion Employee Handbook. City Manager is asked to address the council on this.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, following the work session on Tuesday, there was discussion, a lot of discussion around the residency requirements. So at our staff meeting Wednesday morning, we spent some time talking about providing a proposed alternative rather than including the entire state of Iowa. So what we did was we looked at some of the larger communities that are around Marion and and just basic GIS search or GPS search and found that really we'd be comfortable with a 70 mile radius. That keeps drive time within a reasonable hour, but it also allows us to hit some of the larger population centers when we're trying to attract talent. One thing that we want to make clear is that when we do our any sort of recruitment efforts, we do always put an emphasis here on Marion. But you know, our population basis is is what it is. And so we're just trying to get as best, as many qualified candidates as possible. So we wanted to offer this as a, as an alternative based on the feedback that we heard from Tuesday's work session.
Thank you. All right, we'll take discussion on this, on this resolution right now. Sarah, go ahead.
I kind of brought this up. I just want to kind of clarify and make sure this isn't this isn't really about response times when I, when I talk about this. And then everybody loves Marion and we love Marion, but part of my pushback and the questions I had with this was really about the, you know, our taxpayers are paying for this community and, you know, and for all of, for all of us. And I know everybody loves Marion, but it's just as a message to those who are choosing Marion as community members that I know they like to interact with our, our team and that's what makes us unique. I think on a lot of places for a community our size, we've always said it's great that you can, you know, get things done here. It isn't a mile, it isn't piles of administration that keeps you away from the people who are making decisions or who you're working with and that being able to have those relationships. So you know, that's really the big piece of it. That's where my brain goes or went.
Who else? Steve?
Ah, no, I, I guess my comment, I mean, given that every business, every city is experiencing extreme challenges on employee attraction. So I think you have to have some compromise in that area. I understand exactly what Sarah's saying. We love every employee to live in the Marion District, but I think given the environment today, that probably is not going to happen. I can't imagine too many businesses of any size that have every employee living within their city. So to me, this is a reasonable compromise. I was not adverse to to the state of Iowa, but I think 70 miles is going to catch all of the metro areas, Waterloo, Dubuque, Davenport, Iowa City. So I think you catch a lot of them within that. So it seems reasonable to me.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mensah and I had a conversation yesterday and I know exactly her thoughts on this and I share the same thoughts. And and one thing for for us, Team Marion, when when we're asking you to be part of Team Marion, we're asking you to be part of not just the organization, but also the community and integration into the community is really important for for me as the leader of the organization. And I know the leadership team shares that. So when we do go through that, that recruitment process, we are looking for folks that are not just technically competent, but also understand the importance and the pride that that our community has for for what we offer as a, as an employment center, but also as a quality life center. And and that's something that we're working on internally to make sure that we continue to reinforce that with our team members, whether it's through our employee engagement committee, whether it's through our communication things and other other activities that we have. And the mayor and I were just talking about it before the meeting, just how proud we are that our, our employees do take advantage of things like the peppermint walk and other activities around the community. And we're going to continue to push that and and make sure that they that they have the opportunity to see those that they serve and interact with them and understand the impact that they have on their lives. So so it is, it's, it's not just the radius. It's, it's also kind of what we believe in and how how we're cultivating the culture here in Team Marion. So.
Thank you, and I appreciate the staff coming back and looking at that and making the adjustment. You know, it is, it is a difficult thing because once you take away the limitation, it's really hard to put it back. And we're making this change for all time, really, not just for this, this, this atmosphere we're in now with availability of talent workforce. It's really, it's a change for all time because it's going to, it would be hard to put it back, to go backwards. But I think this is a good compromise. I do appreciate hearing that this has to be accompanied by building a culture where people feel engaged and and want to be part of the community that they're making decisions for and impacting the lives in. So I think that has to go hand in hand with that. And I do believe that we are building that kind of culture where people who work for the city are proud of the city and proud of their, their impact that they make and their work. And so hopefully, you know, if it's possible, they'll choose to also live here. So, okay. Any more discussion on this? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution Number 31076, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-24, amending Chapter 31 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to the Civil Rights Commission. Second consideration.
Second.
It moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-24, amending Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the Civil Rights Commission. Discussion? All those in favor of ordinance number 22-24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion is approved.
Mayor, I move to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 22-24.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules and proceed to the final consideration of ordinance number 22-24. Any discussion on suspending the rules? Go ahead.
I think we should just at least have a statement on record as to why we're suspending the rules, simply because it is an unusual circumstance for us. So if somebody could provide that background.
Yes, we have, staff has requested this suspension of the rules because we have the changes that we're required to make with the state legislature so that we're consistent with that. And we have a deadline to have that done, which is in January. I don't know the exact date, but we were hoping to have this done in advance of that so we could get that taken care of. And then the other reason is because we are making changes to the, the size of the board. And several of the commissioners would be up for, their terms would be expired on December 31st. In that way, we are not having vacancies for an open period and then taking those away or asking people to be reappointed. And there, there's no question. It just makes it easier to have this already passed at a time where we, we would not need to worry about that.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion to suspend the rules and proceeding to vote on the final consideration of ordinance number 22-24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Okay, the motion to suspend the rules is approved. So do we, now we need a motion to, for the final consideration. So would you make, do that? Mrs. Sterned?
So.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. It is, it's, it's part of the agenda. Okay. Mr. Harper, go ahead.
Thank you. Your Honor, I move to approve ordinance number 22-24, amending Chapter 31 of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to the Civil Rights Commission. And this is our final consideration.
Second.
We moved and seconded to prove the final consideration of ordinance number 22-24, amending Chapter 31 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the Civil Rights Commission. Discussion? All those in favor of the motion for the final consideration of ordinance number 22-24, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for the trade packages associated with the new public service maintenance facility. Public hearing is now open. May we have a presentation, please? Thank you.
Your Honor, on October 20th, 2022, the Marion City Council approved the project calendar for the trade packages for the new public bids were received on December 8th, 2022. At this time, staff is recommending to award the electrical package, mechanical package, the paving package, the roofing package, and the overhead door packages. At this time, staff does not recommend awarding the civil package, the building concrete package, and the general construction package. We are going to work to value engineer these packages and rebid these out. We are going to work to value engineer these packages and rebid these out starting in January. And if council would like them, you have to go through the packages individually if you want to.
Okay, that's the end. Okay. We'll take comments from the public, either in favor or against this, this measure at this time. Anyone here or who's with us virtually, who's asked to address the council?
I don't see anyone virtually that is asking to speak.
Okay. And we'll close the public hearing and move to the vote. For the vote, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro temp.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make the motion to approve the project calendar regarding the public service facility trade packages as follows. This will include resolution numbers three, one, zero, seven, seven through three, one, zero, eight, one.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar regarding the public service facility trade packages as follows. Resolutions three, one, zero, seven, seven through three, one, zero, eight, one. Any discussion? I think none. We will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. You taking it back now or?
Yes.
Okay. Rachel, I neglected to ask you if we received comments outside the meeting or Ryan?
I have not.
We have not.
Okay, note that for the public record, please. Okay, now we're on B three.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the project calendar regarding the public service facility trade packages as follows. Resolutions three, one, zero, eight, two to three, one, zero, eight, four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the project calendar for the public service trade packages. Resolutions three, one, zero, eight, two through three, one, zero, eight, four. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Ryan, just a moment ago, you said you wanted to have some additional time to apply some value engineering to, to these. Can you just give a general description for the record what that entails? Sure. And so on these three packages, these were way, the, the bids came way over the estimates. When we went to the line items, there were some very glaring things that we could address. And so I'll give you an example on the, on the civil package. There are some things that we could easily take out of there to significantly reduce that package. Some of those are like line striping, things like that. We can do that. We can do that. That's not hard. The build on the general construction package. One example, we had a line item for lockers for $25,000. Those came in at $220,000. And then painting, that came in at $580,000. That was a line item for $40,000. So what we're going to do is that we're going to, we're going to clean, clean this up. And as of today, we see some significant improvements on these packages. And so what we want to do is get these back out the bit. Our goal is to get these packages back out by January 12th. We want to bring these back to council in, in the first meeting of February. And I think you'll see some substantial differences in the, in the
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, Ryan, who, who had the primary responsibility for putting these three trade packages together? And then follow-up question is how, who's all going to be involved in getting them modified?
The design work is provided by Shive Haveri. The cost estimates is provided by Coman.
Okay.
In terms of providing the, or addressing these issues, that's Kim and myself as well as my staff. And so as of today, we've provided a margin order that you will provide us an Excel spreadsheet of these, of these items we see that, that need to be addressed. Within the next week or two, we're going to, we're going to make some decisions here. And so when these come back, I think you'll see some differences. I will address that. There are some things that given the current circumstances with material pricing are going to be somewhat of a challenge, building concrete package. I know for a fact that ready mixed concrete, we've seen a forty to fifty dollar price increase in, in cubic yards over the past year. So we need to look at that a little bit harder. That's one thing that we don't want to, we don't want to jeopardize its integrity. But at the same time, we want to do our jobs and come back with a, with a reasonable scope to complete this, this project.
Now, the two that surprised me is that the, on the civil, on the civil improvement and the building concrete, that there was only one bid on each of those and only two on the general construction. But on the, the civil in the building, only having one bid was a little, was a pretty big surprise to me, given that those are pretty much, much more commonplace around here. So I don't know if the bid package scared people off.
For the building concrete, it did. And so there's a, there's an additive that was included within that package. It's a waterproofing additives that was included throughout the entire building slab. The feedback from other contractors is that they didn't want to bid it because it's an accelerant and it's very difficult to work with. So that, that additive alone is $250,000. And so by taking that added about and reaching out to other subcontractors, there's a lot more interest now. The other thing is, is timing. I think this got brought up on Tuesday. When we go out for bids again, and we're going to make sure that subcontractors are aware and we're not competing against other projects. And so that was another thing that we ran into. We only get one bid for flat work and one bid for civil work in Marion, Iowa. That's a concern.
I would agree.
And so we're going to address that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So we'll now vote on the motion to approve the project calendar for the trade packages included in resolutions three, one, zero, eight, two through three, one, zero, eight, four. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, the motion is not approved.
Mayor, move to approve resolution number three, one, zero, eight, five, rejecting bids and further authorizing staff to rebid for the following packages associated with the public service maintenance facility. This will include civil improvement, building concrete and the general construction.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three, one, zero, eight, five, rejecting the bids and further authorizing the staff to rebid for the packages associated with the public service maintenance facilities related to civil improvement, building concrete and general construction. Discussion on this motion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three, one, zero, eight, five, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, which has, is a continued hearing, public hearing from December eighth for an amendment to chapter one seventy-six of the Code of Ordinances. Zoning regulations to establish one seventy, chapter one seventy-six point five six architectural design standards and site development plan review. So the, the public hearing is, is continued to be open. Do we have anyone who's asked to address the council on this matter?
Yes, I have Nick Glue.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a few quick comments. I, I wanted to, I guess, big picture, say, say a big thank you to the that they've done on this, on this document. We engaged in, in an effort to help them develop some feedback on this document a few months ago. There was four or five different entities, developers, architects, that we were able to solicit some feedback from. And I just really appreciate the work that the planning staff did together with the Planning and Zoning Commission to really lean into that feedback and review this document to make it an even better document for our community and also a better document for our development community to, to understand. There's some feedback in here from even some developers that came and, and brought projects to our community in the past year that their feedback wasn't necessarily around what's in it, but just the importance of these documents providing clarity and expectations that you all have in development in our community. So I think this is, is it a perfect document? Maybe not, but this is a great document to really communicate clarity of expectations to our development community. And it's something I think we can always improve as we find ways that it needs to be improved moving forward. But it's just a great first step. And again, I just really want to commend the work of the, of the planning staff for working with development partners to get it to this point.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have nobody else asking to speak.
Okay. And has anyone submitted comments outside this meeting?
I have not received anything.
Dave? Okay, let's note that for the record and we will continue the hearing. But it'll continue to be open. So, all right, we'll move on to F two, please.
Yes, your honor, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-five, amending chapter one seventy-six zoning regulations to establish chapter one seventy-six point five six architectural design standards and site development plan review. This is our second consideration.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-five, amending chapter one seventy-six zoning regulations to establish chapter one seventy-six point five six architectural design standards and site development plan review. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two dash twenty-five on the second consideration, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. The motion is approved.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the dedication of Yorkshire Court as a private street and private detention basin subject to the replat of the coves at English Glen Final Platte. And this is from Adam Stratt. Did I say that right? Stratt? Thank you.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the dedication of Yorkshire Court, which is a private street and private detention basin, subject to the replat of the coves at English Glen Final Platte. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, Mike, maybe this falls in your realm as well as maybe Ryan. Based on what you heard Mr. Stratt describe relative to the modifications and work that he's going to undertake, does, does that alleviate our fundamental concerns relative to accepting or not accepting this?
It does alleviate some of the items, but there's still some large lingering items that are still out there. Can we go to the next slide? One more. So as you can see here, there's some proposed and required, requirements that are still not met. So the right of way is, you know, if this is a typical street, it would be sixty foot. There's proposes forty-three point one seven. The cul-de-sac radius, even though it's filling in the middle of it, it'll make it easier, but it still doesn't meet the forty-five foot requirement. The width of the street, if it was a residential street, it'd be required to be twenty-six foot wide. It's one twenty-four. And then irregardless of what the paving is on the top surface, as you all know, we have fatty clay soils and a high water table and not having that sub base under it. Even if the, the paving is in good condition, we're taking on a less than desirable street.
All right, good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Further discussion? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, I, I think the challenge going forward, and obviously Mr. Stratt has identified some improvements that he's going to make to this entire development. So I applaud him for doing that. That'll make future development better and probably appease the people that are there. But based on the statement he made is that the people there do not want to have any maintenance responsibilities. Again, to me, that just is the definition of an HOA, not necessarily the responsibilities of the city. So the city, even if we took it all over, we might have some responsibility for the basin, maybe plowing the street in the wintertime. But grass mowing and all that, some of those other aspects are still there. If all of those people do not want to have any of those responsibilities. So I think that's still a challenge going forward. And I don't think it, for us taking it over, take, goes away. But to me, the biggest concern I would have that Mike's identified is the paved surface. The concern about how long that street would last in the future. I could, you know, maybe accept some of the other minor deviations up above, but the, the paved surface, I would have a very difficult time even in the future ever accepting that. So.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Thank you, your honor. Just one, one thing as it relates to the basin. Few months ago, staff presented for discussion and direction, some analysis that we were doing about basins, dry and wet. And we, we still owe a work product back to you, which we are working on. We actually have a meeting, an internal meeting here set up in the next week or two. But I bring that up only because the, the direction at that point was that the council had indicated to us that as we start reviewing our policy on that, the preference would not be to take over either wet or dry. And that the, the responsibility would be with respective neighborhoods or, or HOAs via a maintenance agreement. So that was the direction that we've been operating under. It's, it's not directly tied to this, but it does have some connections to, to this request here.
Thank you for that update. Any further discussion? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of approving the motion to accept, to accept the dedication of Yorkshire Court and the private detention basin at English, at, at the coves at English Glen Final, English Glen, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no.
No.
All those, okay, the motion is defeated.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution number three, one, zero, eight, six, approving the central corridor review for property located at two, four, four, nine, seventh Ave, Marion, Iowa. It's Burger King, Beaton Holding Company, L C.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve resolution number three, one, zero, eight, six, approving the central corridor review for property located at twenty-four, forty-nine, seventh avenue. Discussion? All those in favor of resolution number three, one, zero, eight, six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion is approved. Next item is a public hearing to discuss applications for community development block grant disaster recovery housing funds and to collect input for community development housing needs assessment. Public hearing is now open. We have a
I believe we have Kesha online.
Kesha?
And Paula.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just wanted to refresh everyone, the applications before you, we just, on Tuesday, of those applications, three of them staff were, was able to recommend support for because most all zoning compliance was able to be met and site control was assured and whatnot. And the one project I thought worth noting, one of them was withdrawn, so you will not see that today. And then one of the, the fourth project, the bell tower loss was discussed at length on Tuesday, if you recall. And then staff was able to come up with some resolution wording for that. And I thought it was interesting to note here as we go forward with talking about For that, and I thought it was interesting to note here as we go forward with talking about support for these projects to just. Talk through that resolution wording will be different than the others. I was just gonna talk through that quick as far as. Talking through support for the other projects. So the Bell Tower Lofts, what staff has come up with. Is that the Bell Tower Lofts Housing Project seeks to save a historic landmark that is the soul of our community. And whereas that is a historic structure previously occupied as a church. That are various aspects that necessitate approval through the city's advisory boards and commissions. To ensure compliance and compatibility with the code and surrounding neighborhood. And whereas the city of Bell Tower Lofts Housing Project applicant desire to create a project that enhances. And promotes the right balance of residential and commercial uses that are compatible with the community's recent revitalization. Of its historic central business district. And whereas the city of Bell Tower Lofts Housing Project applicant have a desire to work together. With each other and the community partners to address zoning, parking and the incorporation of commercial, commercial space up to three thousand square feet. And then the rest of the wording is standard just with the other. So I thought it was important to note, following back up with conversations, but. The majority of this public hearing is the star of the show is gonna be Paula Mitchell with EC Cog, so take it away, Paula.
Thank you, Paula Mitchell with East Central Iowa Council of Governments. And the purpose of the public hearing tonight is really twofold. The first part is to discuss and. Collect input on several potential community development block grant disaster recovery. Applications for funding for various housing projects and the second part is to collect. Input for a community development and housing needs analysis. So the first part of the public hearing. We have some very specific criteria that we need to hit, and I think you see those on the slide before you. I'm basically going to read a prepared statement because those all need to be reflected in the minutes that go along with the application, so forgive me for. For reading, but that's the best way to ensure that we hit all of those required points. So with that, regarding how the need for the proposed activity or project was identified. Marion has determined that the new housing construction for sale and new construction of rental housing are critical to the recovery of the region from. The August twenty-twenty derecho and to ease the overall housing shortage that exists in the community. Marion has been engaged in recovery efforts and assessing recovery needs ever since the twenty-twenty disaster event. And the city of Marion is represented at the Lynn area partners active in disaster lap aid group, which meets to share data and information and coordinate response. After a disaster event. Marion also coordinated with organizations such as Marion Cares to assess unmet needs and. The Marion Community Development Director participated in regular meetings of a working group of agencies and service providers assisting homeowners in the region. With derecho repairs through a program known as providing assistance to community homeowners or patch, so. Through all of those data was collected. In addition, the city of Marion retained Max Field Research and Associates to complete an updated housing needs analysis for the community and. That did identify a need for three hundred to three hundred and seventy-five to three hundred and seventy-five for sale. Single-family and multifamily units, one hundred and fifty to two hundred shallow subsidy rental units. Fifty-five to eighty active adult shallow subsidy rental units and seventy to eighty independent living units with services in the market area within the next three to five years. So significant housing need was identified. Regarding how the proposed activity or project will be funded and the source of funds. And I'll take these project by project, the ridge at Indian Creek second edition project, which is owner occupied for sale housing will be funded by conventional financing. Secured by the developer, a developer contribution and a request for three million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. In CDBG DR funding. The Winslow House Senior Apartments Project, which is proposed to be rental housing, will be funded by conventional financing secured by the developer. A developer contribution and a request for two million four hundred and seventy thousand in community development block grant disaster funding. The Hoth Flats Project also proposed rental housing will be funded by conventional financing secured by the developer, a developer contribution. And a request for one million nine hundred thousand in community development block grant disaster recovery funding. And the Bell Tower Lofts Project, which is proposed rental housing, will be funded by conventional financing secured by the developer. A developer contribution and a request for three million three hundred and eighty-five thousand in community development block grant disaster recovery funding. Regarding the date that the CDBG DR application will be submitted, it's anticipated that the applications will be submitted online no later than December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. Regarding the amount of federal funds to be requested, again, the amount requested for the ridge at Indian Creek second edition project is. Three million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. The amount of federal funds to be requested for the Winslow House Project is two million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The amount of federal funds to be requested for the Hoth Flats Project is one million nine hundred thousand dollars. And the amount of federal funds to be requested for the Bell Tower Lofts Project is three million three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Regarding the estimated portion of federal funds that will benefit persons of low and moderate income. All of the funds for the ridge at Indian Creek second edition project will benefit households with incomes at or below eighty percent of the area's median income level. That is adjusted for household size and at least fifty-one percent of the funds for each of the rental projects will benefit households with incomes at or below eighty percent. Of the area's median income level. This includes the Winslow House, Hoth Flats, Bell Tower Lofts projects. Regarding where the proposed activities or project will be located. The ridge at Indian Creek second edition, and you'll, I believe, see more on these, but the location is north of Lukor Road and northwest of Tower Terrace Road. Extended. The Winslow House Senior Apartments Project is located at thirty-four fifty-six Indian Creek Road. The Hoth Flats Project is located at eight oh one tenth Street. And the Bell Tower Lofts Project is located at twelve seventy-seven Eighth Avenue. Concerning plans to minimize displacement of persons and businesses as a result of funded activities or projects. Because none of these proposed project sites are currently occupied on the actual site where the building is to be constructed. No displacement of businesses or residents is expected to occur. The land for all of the proposed projects before you tonight is owned by the developers or by one of the development partners. And the city of Marion has previously adopted a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance. Plan as part of a previous CDBG application, which will be updated as needed if projects receive federal federal CDBG DR funding. And of course, the city of Marion will comply with its adopted policies and all laws and regulations. Regarding plans to assist any persons actually displaced, again. Because none of the proposed project sites are currently occupied, no displacement of persons is expected to occur directly as a result of any of these projects. And again, the city of Marion would comply with its adopted policies and any laws and regulations. And then finally, regarding the nature of the proposed activity or project. The purpose of the CDBG DR New Resilient Affordable Housing Program is intended to help communities to meet replacement housing needs. That were created by the August tenth derecho event. Affordable for sale housing constructed through this program must remain affordable for fifteen years and affordable rental housing constructed through this program. Must remain affordable for fifteen years if there are fewer than five units and for twenty years if there are five or more units. The proposed activities include the ridge at Indian Creek Affordable For Sale Housing, which would create twenty units. The Winslow House Senior Apartments Project Affordable Rental Housing, which would create twenty-six units. The Hoth Flats Project Affordable Rental Housing, which would create twenty units. And the Bell Tower Lofts Project, which would create affordable rental housing up to thirty units. The maximum federal dollars to be spent per home for new construction costs is one hundred thousand dollars for owner occupied homes and seventy-five thousand dollars. Per unit for rental projects, plus up to seventy thousand dollars per unit for infrastructure in support of housing if requested. Additional incentives for mitigation activities are available up to twenty-five thousand per unit for owner occupied homes. And up to fifteen thousand unit for rental projects, and those are to increase the energy efficiency and disaster resilience of these projects. Down payment assistance is available for buyers of for sale housing up to thirty-five thousand dollars per unit. And additional funding is available for project delivery. The federal funds utilized for new construction will be secured by forgivable loans in order to secure the affordability periods of fifteen to twenty years. And finally, all units constructed using CDBG DR funding must first be marketed for four months. To persons who were impacted by the August twenty-twenty derecho before being offered to other eligible members of the public. That is all of the information that I have for the first part of the public hearing, and I thought I would pause here to see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Paula. Any questions?
Maybe this was covered in all of this, but so. The process would be when these go to the state, then when these are either recommended or not, they move on to the next level and then the state. Will decide right off of a pool for this county and the others that have been identified, right?
That's correct. Lynn County has its own pool of funding for which all of these projects would be competing with other projects in Lynn County. And there's a separate pool of funding that's available for several other counties that were severely impacted.
And the time in the end, once these go in by the end of the year, right, these are due by the end of the month?
Right.
And then what's the timing again for the decisions and then? Next steps?
Yes, um, there's no firm date for decisions, but we're anticipating end of January to mid February.
Okay, I think that's all the questions, at least on that part. Do you have any, anything else to add, Paula?
Uh, not regarding that information.
Okay, thank you.
So the next part of this public hearing is the community development and housing needs assessment. And this is really intended to be developed kind of organically by any input from the public as well as from members of the city council. There are some talking points that we are required to cover again, so I will just hit those at a very high level. And I think that they may help to spur conversation about these three items that we need to cover. Which are a description of the housing market in the community, any disaster recovery and housing improvement activities. Completed in the last five years and then the impact on disaster recovery before we move into. The housing needs analysis, so just very high level overview of the housing market in the community. You you have your housing needs analysis, but. Currently, it's it's and it's a. Believe that there are about sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-one residential dwellings in Marion, of which seventy-two percent are owner occupied. Twenty percent are rental and eight percent are mobile homes. The typical single-family home value currently is two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-three, which is actually up twenty-seventh percent. From two years prior. And homes currently are averaging about sixteen days on the market as of when this data was pulled. And thirty-six percent of renters in the community are cost burdened, which means that they are paying more than. Thirty percent of their income for housing costs and of those nearly half are severely cost burdened, which means they're paying more than fifty percent of their income for housing costs. The current homeowner vacancy rate is zero point six percent and rental vacancy rate is one to two percent. And so both of those figures are below market equilibrium, which is considered to be about five percent. So it is indicative of a very tight housing market and that's that's typical for all of Lynn County right now. Uh, regarding disaster recovery and housing improvement activities completed over the last five years. In the immediate disaster response, as was noted, Marion did coordinate with Lynn County Emergency Management. Lap Aid, Marion Cares and the Patch Working Group. In spring of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, we understand that there was a Marion Housing Assistance Grant Program that provided up to twenty thousand dollars. Of grant funding available through the Marion Civil Rights Commission, which could fund new housing programs in Marion. And then in September, five hundred thousand dollars in home funds. I believe state home funds were awarded to community housing initiatives to develop mixed income apartments in Marion. And then finally, the impact on disaster recovery of these projects. The derecho, just to provide some background, caused about ten million dollars in damages to residential homes. And twenty-five million to multifamily properties across Lynn County. More than three thousand homes were significantly or damaged or destroyed. And at least five hundred and forty-two demolition permits were issued in Lynn County, thirty-nine of which were issued in Marion. And these proposed projects would add twenty new affordable single-family for sale units and up to seventy-six. Affordable rental units throughout Marion. All of these units, as was previously noted, would be designed to be more resilient, energy efficient and to better withstand future disaster events. So that is the background for this discussion. And.
Want questions? Do you want questions on this section?
Okay, so the first item that we are to collect input on is the community development and housing needs of low to moderate income persons. And again, this is really intended to be the community's housing needs assessment. However, I don't come empty handed, so if there is not public input or or specific items that you would like to be included. We have reviewed your housing study and plans and reports and we can bring some recommendations as well, but. I'll turn it over to you for this part.
So do we ask for input at this time?
We do. Yep.
Okay, do we have input on the housing needs of low to moderate income persons? And you're asking specifically for input from the council or input from the public?
So the state would like the public to have an opportunity for input if they would like and then.
Do we have, do we have anyone here from the, or who's asked to address the council on that, on that topic?
Don't believe so. I'm only showing one who wants to speak about one of the projects.
Okay. So Paula, it doesn't look like there's anyone who's asked to provide input on that, on that item.
Okay. Um, in that event, I am happy to take input from members of the council or I am happy to share some of the recommendations. That we put together just based on reviewing plans that were available on your website.
Do we have input from council? Okay, we'll take your recommendations.
Okay, so recommendations that we were able to make based on a review of your housing needs analysis. Things like comprehensive plan, the uptown plan, other things that were available just to ensure that they're consistent with your goals. Were prioritization of rehabilitation of the existing housing stock. You have a significant portion that was built prior to nineteen ninety and many of those are. Owned by low and moderate income homeowners, so again, just providing a mechanism to to help them with repairs. Secondly, increasing opportunity for home purchases for low and moderate income home buyers. Possibly through partnerships and development programs with other entities such as nonprofit service providers. Providing increased opportunity for affordable rental units for low and moderate income runners. Again, possibly through other partnerships with other agencies. And I would note that in Marion, seventy-six percent of renters are low to moderate income persons. And then housing affordability, supported through zoning permitting and technical assistance. Increased age restricted housing opportunities and that I believe was noted in your housing needs assessment. And then finally, enhanced public service delivery to accommodate the needs and loan of low and moderate income persons, and that could include library facilities. Recreation activities, energy improvements and access to broadband, which incidentally, these projects are required to provide access to broadband.
Okay. What's next?
Okay, so second item is other community development and housing needs. And then I, I'm assuming there's no public input on this one either or.
We'll check. Do we have anyone who has asked to provide input?
Not for this item.
Okay. There's no, we have no one to 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 provide input, so go ahead.
So recommendations here could include increased opportunities for economic development through efficient and well-maintained infrastructure. Enhanced business opportunities to increase local workforce participation through improved transportation, education and private investment. Expanded housing options for those over age sixty-five, which is about sixteen percent of the population in Marion. And. Uh, it's noted that senior citizens do require adequate housing alternatives to remain in the community as they age, and I do believe one of these projects. Is intended to provide some aging in place options. And then finally, expanded owner occupied and rental housing options to accommodate your existing population and future growth.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments? Any, any questions or comments on that from council? All right, please go ahead.
Okay, and the last item is planned and potential activities to address housing needs. And our first recommendation certainly would be to apply for the funding under the CDBGDR program to increase housing options for low and moderate income households. Secondly, prioritizing streets, parks, and recreation and public service improvements to attract and retain residents, and I believe was something noted in the Uptown Master Plan. And then lastly, continuing to update and review your strategic plan and capital improvements projects to establish or expand services, enhancing public safety and ensuring those services are provided at affordable rates for persons with low and moderate income. And some items that we noted from twenty twenty-two were upgrades to your public safety information management system, the new Marion Public Library, and two point two million in neighborhood street improvements, as well as part-time staff to increase programming at the new YMCA in Marion. And finally, seeking other public assistance for housing development rehabilitation assistance, and as appropriate, any mutual benefit agreements with private nonprofit service entities to achieve benefits that address housing and community development needs. And that's all I have.
Okay, any comments or questions on that? Go ahead, Sarah.
In any of these reports, we talk about services. Does the fact of, and I'm thinking of at least two of the proposed projects, but grocery store food access come up with recommendations for? I mean, I know obviously the ones that are out of ways, that's, there's nothing by them. But as I look in the Uptown area and I'm looking at all these projects and we're talking about it, going back to, going back to Blue Zones project days, you know, we talked about the food desert situation. Walkability to grocery. So did, did that come up in any of the reports? Or any of your assessments, there's a recommendation for that?
It's not something that we pulled, but that's something that we certainly could add. I always bring my pen as well as recommendations, so if that's something that the council would like to see added, we can certainly add that. It will be a component of the review for these projects. They'll have to note their proximity to amenities.
Yeah, and that, and maybe not, that's, this maybe isn't the place, but as we're looking at all of these and we continue to discuss the changes or whatever, I just see the big glaring piece that's missing to this space, especially in the Uptown area that it's public transportation to get to grocery. We don't have anywhere that you can walk to, that isn't convenience store related, so. I guess, yeah, fresh, yeah, pressure, whatever. So anyway, side, park that over here in the parking lot, side discussion, but. I didn't know that was.
Anyone else? Okay, do you have anything else, Paula?
That's all I have today.
Okay, so do we have anyone who was asked to address the council?
Yes, I have Jill Ackerman.
Okay. Jill?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Jill Ackerman, Marion Chamber, ten seventy-seventh Avenue. I just really quick wanted to offer the Chambers perspective and also our commitment specifically to the Conlin Construction Project. First of all, we're very thankful to Conlin Construction for stepping forward to save the historic church building. That building literally houses many, many stories of Marionites over hundreds of years, mine included. If that building were to go away, those stories would be dimmed and probably over time just lost. So the building itself is very important, and it's really important that we save it. That said, I don't think I am saying anything that our city council staff, Conlin, Medco, or even the general public would disagree with when I say the highest and best use of that building is probably commercial development, allowing continuity of our commercial district. That's really important. However, I think we can also all agree that at the end of the day, the project needs to cash flow in order to save the building. So I think the Chamber supports running two parallel efforts, just making sure, number one, that Conlin can apply for the housing program. And at the same time, we'll be working to round up potential commercial tenants and looking for other dollars to add to their capital stack, because it's going to take a lot of money to create a great project in that location. Also, I think none of us as stakeholders in Marion, we just can't ignore the importance of the commercial piece of that project. Marion right now has one of the most successful downtowns in the state, and I think we really need to capitalize on that. We're also a very small downtown, and we have a finite amount of historic buildings and a finite amount of space that can be restored or redeveloped. And I think the Chamber and Uptown both want to be at the table, and we're committed to help find tenants and financial resources, really whatever it takes to make this project a success for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for Jill? Okay, thanks, Jill. Anyone else who is asked to address the council?
I don't have anyone else asking to speak.
Okay. I, I would just add that, just for the record, that we did get a comment from the Conlin folks that they, they have carved out a certain portion of the, of the building for commercial. My understanding was at least a thousand square feet for commercial, so just want to be sure that that's part of the record. Ryan, you have something?
Yeah, just to head on to that, the resolution that, the language that Kesha had read into the record, up to three thousand square feet during the, during the workshop on, on Tuesday, there was a couple thousand, up to three thousand, so that's why, I know, Mayor, you received that message from Conlin, and so we just wanted to make sure we had that, that range established in the resolution for the record.
Anything else for the public hearing? Any comments received outside this meeting?
I have not received anything.
Okay. Then we could, we can close the public hearing, and for the voting on the resolutions, I will turn over the meeting to the mayor pro tem.
Mayor Pro Tem, make a motion to approve resolution number three one zero eight seven, authorize and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments, EC cog, to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Lot Grant Disaster Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa depart, to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Hoff Flats Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for the application.
Second. Okay. I apologize. I didn't mean to turn it over for this one, so. Yep, okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve resolution number thirty-one oh eight seven, authorizing and directing EC cog to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the CDBGDR funds to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Hoff Flats Housing Projects. Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion's approved.
Mayor, move to approve resolution number three one zero eight eight, authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Winslow House Senior Apartments Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for that application.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one zero eight eight, authorizing and directing EC cog to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the CDBGR, GDR program to the IEDA for the Winslow House Senior Apartments Housing Project. Discussion? All those in favor of the resolution number three one zero eight eight, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. The motion is approved. The next two items, I will turn over to the mayor pro tem. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three one zero eight nine, authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments, to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Ridge at Indian Creek Second Edition Townhouses Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for the application.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one zero eight nine, authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Ridge at Indian Creek Second Edition Townhouses Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for the application. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution, I move to approve resolution number three one zero nine zero, authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Bell Tower Lofts Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for the application.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three one zero nine zero, authorizing and directing East Central Iowa Council of Governments to submit an application and associated documents for funding for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Recovery Housing Program to the Iowa Economic Development Authority for the Bell Tower Lofts Housing Project and authorizing the mayor to sign and execute all documents required for the application. Discussion? Mr. Harper?
Yes, I, so I just, really, this is a, a comment, and I know we had a rather robust discussion at our work session about this. And certainly, I appreciate the presentation that was made at that time to help clarify the driving force undertaking the economics that are necessary for this project. I think that supporting this, this grant application meets the primary goal of taking any and all action in order to preserve this historical structure in our, in our Uptown area. I think that's got to be the overarching primary goal. But making, supporting this application with that goal in mind, I, picking up on the comments that Jill made several minutes ago during the public hearing, there are three things that we still need to put energy to. And that is, we need to, we need to understand and, and mitigate the, the parking issues that are, might be associated with this. We also need to be effectively analyzing how the zoning requirements can, can be addressed. And then finally, the commercial attributes. I mean, that is really, at, at the origin of this project, it was really viewed to be a commercial center. Well, that's changed, and it is now a residential objective, but we can't lose sight of optimizing, and in fact, perhaps even increasing the commercial attribute of it, if at all possible. So, so parking, commercial, and zoning are still the homework assignment that this project has to be attending to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Yeah, first of all, I, I want to make sure I do go on record, based on all of the comments I had on Tuesday, that I am one hundred percent in favor of saving this church and this historic building. But I also want to go on record again stating that I think there's a very serious parking concern with thirty units in this building. All the other projects provide their own parking. I drove around three or four blocks within this building, and I see it as a tremendous challenge to find thirty spots within three or four blocks. So I just want to make sure that the developers here, at least from my stand, personal standpoint, would understand how I feel that, that it is not one hundred percent the responsibility of the city to solve that parking issue. So, but I am in favor of moving ahead with the application.
What else? Comments or questions?
No comments. First, I, you know, I appreciate the fact, I went back after our discussion on Tuesday, because time flies, but it also kind of stands still, and I went back and reread the article from the Gazette when we saved this, when this was saved, and we celebrated the fact that Conlin Construction came through the last minute to make sure that this was saved from the wrecking ball that was literally sitting there waiting to take it down. So I don't want that to go unnoticed as we now are really in the weeds trying to figure this out. So I support that we are keeping this moving and the application. Same thing on the record with that. I wish it was a, commercial, B, that it was owner occupied, because I think there's some really unique fun things that could be done with this when you look at other projects, and we don't have a lot of owner occupied in the Uptown area. We have, we're getting more and more rental. I think there was unique with that, but we can get to that later. I think right now, priority being to save this, but I also, Conlin has showed a commitment in the other projects they're doing in this community, and high development as part of the partners with this, that I hope that they're looking at how to be continued partners on this project as it ages in its space there, and we continue to be involved in the community and the redevelopment in that whole area, and looking at, you know, the, again, reach higher. I mean, little, we, we all live by that, and I'm proud that we all do, but it's really, we really need to be reaching higher on this one, on this, many projects, but this one is such a, such a focus on community. The community is looking at this one and, and watching, so.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I don't know, Kesha, the wording in the letter from the city, the support letter, Kesha read it earlier, what was added for this one? And it was the three thousand in commercial, was it, did it say, does it say three thousand or up to?
Up to. Up to.
Up to three thousand, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of resolution number three one zero nine zero, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. Motion carries with one abstention. I'll turn the meeting back over to the mayor.
Okay. Next item is a public forum, which at a time set aside for comments from members of the public on any topic. Is there anyone here to address the council? Anyone on, online to address the council?
Yes, I believe Gary Sneller.
Okay. Gary?
Hello, I'm Reverend Gary Sneller, eight twenty-nine. Can you all hear me?
Yes, welcome, Gary.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you all virtually rather than in person, under the weather circumstances. I'm co-leader of Stand in Unity, Racial Social Justice Faith Coalition, allied with Marion Alliance for Racial Equity. And Dr. Ray Coleman, junior pastor at Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church is co-leader with me. And I spoke with you all two weeks ago about the one-year anniversary of this council's. And I spoke with you all two weeks ago about the one year anniversary of this council's approval of the Community Equity Task Force. Recommendations, and I want to thank you tonight for the City of Marion Equity Initiative twenty twenty two progress report. That was presented at Tuesday's city council work session. That report provides very important information about how the city of Marion is moving forward in its effort to effectively. Integrate the work of equity, diversity, and inclusion into every aspect of city life and municipal structures. I hope that the report will be easily accessible for citizens on the City of Marion website. There is much ongoing work that needs to happen as we work to translate lofty words. About equity, diversity, and inclusion into everyday practice. Please know that those of us involved with Stand in Unity and other concerned citizens are eager to work with you in this. Ongoing work of equity, diversity, and inclusion. We look forward to partnering with you in the coming year. As implementation of the Community Equity Task Force recommendations continues. And in helping to communicate to citizens of our community. How and why this equity, diversity, and inclusion work truly serves to make the city of Marion. The best place in Iowa to raise a family and grow a business, thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and the report will be available not only to citizens but to all residents as well as people outside of Marion, so. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Anna Climber.
Anna?
Hi, this is Anna Climber, twenty four seventy five McGowan Boulevard in Marion. And I just wanted to also reiterate the appreciation for the progress report on the Equity Task Force. I sat as a substitute for some Marion Alliance for Racial Equity members and. It's important to kind of review where things are at a year after the report was submitted. Thinking about the areas of growth that continue to be present in some of the work in various departments, but also. In looking forward to the adoption of an equity statement that can be not just vision of what we could do. Better in our community to create welcoming, inclusive, and a place to belong for all of our neighbors. But thinking forward on how to make that actionable and accountable. Some of the things I hope to also see is that the IDI or the Intercultural Development Inventory is expanded beyond the library staff. To other city staff that can continue to assess their own progress on. Understanding the importance and critical understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion. And certainly looking forward to continuing to support all the efforts that are going on with the Civil Rights Commission. To move forward and move out information so that people know what their rights are. Especially in light of some of the conversations today about equitable housing and access to resources. Certainly access to being able to file necessary information and complaints. So I certainly thank the city for the update and I hope to continue to. Hear as Reverend Gary just said, promotion of how our citizens can continue to engage. Learn how to move forward, some of the equity focused efforts, not just within city departments, but certainly between us as neighbors and. Community members, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Anyone else?
I don't believe so, I'll just state Cersei Stumbo is listening via Zoom and she just wants to acknowledge the equity report. And looks forward to further conversation.
Anyone else? That's it? Okay. Then we'll move on to council comments. Just turn that.
Thank you, Mayor, this will mark our last meeting for two thousand and twenty two. Hardly this year has come and gone already. I would like to thank all of our staff, city member, city workers, all of our employees. We've done a lot of great work this year that's going to continue to keep driving our city in the right direction. A lot of foundations have been put into the ground, a lot of hard work has been placed and super excited to. Continue that that momentum and look forward to opening up the the new year at our next meeting, but. I just want to wish everybody happy holidays, stay safe, stay warm, and for those of our. City staff members that'll be out there serving the public. For hours to come through these holiday days and hours, there's still a lot of hard work ahead of us. Through these grueling low temperatures as we take a look of dropping down into the twenties below zero, so. Anyway, happy holidays to those that honor that and have a great break, thank you.
Yeah, reiterating that, happy holidays, thank you for all you do, Team Marion and Ryan, I really do sit in awe of your. Department and how they get done, what they get done in this community and the temperatures they do and all the things that we know go wrong that they have to fix. And we did garbage pickup today too, on top of that, so on top of keeping the streets clean, I mean, it's. It's very amazing and it's not unrecognized and I see the comments from. My neighborhoods and other communities just being grateful for the drivers that are out there doing that, so. Maybe don't get to see all that, but I want to make sure that gets passed along. And again, thanks for all you do, thanks for getting me through a year and I hope you all have a safe. End of two thousand and twenty two and beginning of twenty three.
Happy holidays, everybody, and I'll just echo exactly what those two just said, because that's what I was gonna say, so ditto.
Same comment, happy holidays and enjoy the first white Christmas we've had since two thousand and seventeen. So I'm just letting you all know, my wife was very happy with the storm and the snow that we had, so.
Well. I'd like just to reflect the same comments that have been made, happy holidays, I hope everybody. As you gather with friends and family, that that can be done safely and with a lot of joy and frolic. I guess, but relative to the snowfall thing. I'm here to tell you I've enjoyed it enough, so thank you very much.
Okay, for my part, just a little bit of update from since the last meeting, things I've. Worked on, we've had some. I've had a number of meetings with high school students for government projects, one of them even had me do a. Video endorsement of his campaign for presidents, you know. But several interviews with with students from college community to Marion High School from all over. And I had the chance to speak to all the second graders at Novak Elementary. We had some ribbon cutting ceremonies, I want to thank Steve for stepping in on one of them. I had the chance to represent the city and address or do a welcome for the Trees Forever Woodlands Symposium. And as always, I'm always proud to represent our city and to sing sing your praises. For all the good work that you're doing. And we had the chance to tour the Trees Forever facility, their their addition, which is looking great. Worked with several businesses to help solve some issues. And had several meetings with developers who are interested in doing projects in Marion. Talked through some ideas and some 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 things with them about. What what the city, what the community needs and how they could be part of that. Had some work with boards and commissions, lots going on since the last meeting. And I'm glad to do it, I I've never been more proud to be. In this position, I'm really. Grateful to be part of this team, I think we have accomplished a lot in this last year, I want to thank. City, city manager Waller for all the great work he's done, he hit the ground running a year ago. And he hasn't slowed down a bit and everyone has come right along with him and everyone's doing such great work. I'm ending my eighth, my. Ninth year, tenth year, ninth year or tenth year on city council, my seventh year as mayor. And in that first State of the City speech, you know, I I gave everyone a challenge was to actually. Accept the 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 challenge of reaching higher. And I challenged us all to work to put the city in the driver's seat so that we are driving. The progress that we that we experience and not being reactive or being bystanders. To what's going on in our city, that we are determining where we want our city to go and helping to drive that and. I really feel like we have reached that point to where we are, driving what happens in our city. And we are making a great impact on the lives of people, and we have a lot of. Impact in every decision that we make, every every one of our three hundred plus employees. Whatever a role they play, we're impacting people's lives with every decision we make with everything that we do and so. I really appreciate all the work that people and the care that people put into their job. All the the investment that they have emotionally, personally. In doing a good job and to serving the residents of Marion and it really shows in our community. I look forward to continuing to work together with everyone through the next year. I think I I appreciate every one of our council members, I think we have a council that works very well together. We have very smart people who don't always agree on every issue, but at the end of the day, I know that people are voting. And 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 acting on 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 initiatives based on well thought out. Well founded decision making and. I have the utmost trust in every one of the council members and every one of our our team members, so. If you celebrate Christmas, I wish you a very merry Christmas for you and your families, if you celebrate a different holiday, happy holiday. And let's come back next year and keep things going. I have been reminded that as of January, we'll be starting office hours again, so I will. I encourage residents to come and meet council members, share your ideas, your thoughts, your comments, ask for information. At the library every Saturday morning, we'll have at least one city council member there, so with that. We'll adjourn our last meeting of two thousand and twenty two. Thank you, everyone.